Ready? Good morning, everybody. This is the Board of County Commissioners in Rio Blanco County. This meeting will be streamed live on the RBC YouTube channel. If you would like to participate in this meeting and are unable to travel during July, we will be having a virtual link to the meeting set up in Meker at the Historic Courthouse. And we are calling this meeting to order at 11:06 and we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public comment period. Any member of the public may address the board on matters which are within the jurisdiction of the board. If you're addressing the board regarding a matter listed on the agenda, you are requested to limit your comments to three minutes per member or five minutes per group. Public comment time is not for questions and answers. It is your time to express your views. To ensure there's adequate public comment time, please provide your name and address prior to the meeting by contacting the board assistant at 970-878-9683. If any member of the public would like to comment at this time, please state your name and address for the record. We will start with in the room. Are there any public comments in the room? Seeing none, are there any online? Thank you. Seeing none, we will move on to. This is a tentative agenda which includes all information available as of July 18th, 2025. The final tentative agenda will be posted at the RBC Historic Courthouse, 555 Main Street, Meker, Colorado, and at the Rangeley Town Hall, 209 East Main Street in Rangeley. I would entertain a motion for line item D.
Madam Chairman, I make a motion to approve the agenda for July 22nd, 2025 without any changes.
And a second.
I have a motion and a second. Will you please call the roll, Chrissy?
Oh, Virgin.
All right.
Oh, Helen.
Hi.
It's Chrissy.
Hi.
Motion passes. Moving on to the consent line item, line item A.
I'm sure I'd move to approve the consent agenda, which includes the meeting minutes from July 8th and the July 18th, 2025 payroll management report.
A second then.
I have a motion and a second. Any? Any input from either of you on that? Will you please call the roll?
Oh, Helen.
Hi.
Stitchfield.
Hi.
Elberton.
All right.
Motion passes. Line item three, we'll move on to business. And the first one is a presentation for enterprise fleet management.
Chris, what time did you tell him that would be on? I told him at 11, but he is not on currently.
Maybe I bet that's him. I think he was waiting for me to get the link to him or something. Probably. Failed in my duties. There he is. Can you hear us?
Andrew, can you hear us? Yeah, he's unmute.
Oh, hi.
There. We are ready for your presentation.
Alrighty, jump right into it. Appreciate everybody joining me today and I apologize I couldn't be there in person. Let me just grab my notebook. And I think really what I would love to do today is just simply recap what, obviously I talked to the commissioners about last year. I know we have one new commissioner and welcome. And review high level overview of what I've spoken to Vicki and the team about and then get into some granular detail on what a year one budget model would look like. So that's what I planned for today. Is there anything else y'all wanted me to cover or anything important to you?
Andrew, I just want to say, so I emailed you that the four attachments, the presentation. So if you check your email, you should have a new email from the houses for presentations, but he's going to be going over those.
Gotcha. So it's what I had shared with you.
Yeah.
Previously.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just so that you can show it on your screen, but if they, they've got it for reference.
Perfect. And Vicki, did you want to make any comments before we jump in?
No, I guess kind of my only thought process is, you know, trying to make sure that all three commissioners hear the same presentation. We did this presentation so late in the year last year. It was, would have been really hard to try and fund that if the commissioners decided they want to go with that. So the thought process here and Andrew's been very patient with us. Ryan and Tina and Thad Val, we've met several times refining, you know, saying, well, what, this is what we're looking for. What if we did that, that kind of thing? So Andrew was very patient with us and I appreciate that. So basically you'll have the information so that we can decide if this is something that you want to go down. We have it early enough in the budget cycle that we can make sure we can allocate for it. So, and you will have one more presentation by Unified. A little bit different presentation on theirs. They might look more at the heavy type stuff. But again, this is a real good starting point for us to determine whether this is going to be a fit for Rio Blanco or not.
Thank you. Appreciate that kind introduction. So just real briefly, I've with Enterprise for 20 plus years. We do work with a lot of government agencies and counties, helping them taking a look at their budget and really trying to determine the best way to potentially work within what you're currently spending to reallocate some funds around procuring vehicles in a little faster fashion and also being able to recognize an inbound revenue stream from the sale of existing vehicles. Really it stems from Enterprise's expertise in vehicle procurement of any make or model of vehicle and also our expertise in being able to dispose of and re-market vehicles in a very, very proactive fashion, which again allows our clients to get our experience of an inbound revenue stream from, from existing vehicles. So I'm going to share a high level overview of what we do and I'm also going to get into some granular detail around just a high level analysis of your current fleet. So as Vicki had mentioned, we did profile the fleet about a year ago. Staff and Vicki were kind enough to give me some new information. Ryan, thank you for providing that so that we could rerun everything. What we really like to do is show a high level proof of concept to really show how this can work over a multi-year period of time. And then we get into granular detail of what it would look like, potentially for a implementation of year one in 2026 with some actual budget numbers. So without further ado, and I am not completely accustomed to Google meets, but I am going to do my best to struggle through it. So hopefully you should be able to see the title page. Everybody see that okay?
We do.
Fantastic. So really what we do from a funding mechanism is we utilize a municipal lease, which allows our clients to do more with less capital and also allows them to cycle vehicles more quickly. We do have the capability for our clients to pay cash. I would say most of the time that we work with our county and city partners, they're looking at a funding mechanism so that they can make their capital budget go a bit further. So with a municipal lease, there is no mileage restrictions. There's no wear and tear restrictions. Restrictions. It is much more like financing a vehicle than it is leasing a vehicle. And I always like to explain it a bit like, it would be as if you went into your bank, you financed a vehicle from your bank for four years. If you want to get out at three years, you walk into your bank and you say, well, what's my loan balance? They say it's $10,000. You say, great. You pay them $10,000. If you turn around and sell that vehicle then to somebody else for $20,000, you have a $10,000 gain that you've made on that particular vehicle. And our model is set up to do the exact same thing. So on the right side of the screen, you can see a typical vehicle. If you were to finance it to zero, you would be laying all that cash out over a set period of time. What we recommend doing is financing it to a conservative reduced book value. In this case of this example, it's about $10,000. If we turn around and sell that for 22.5 in this example, you own that $12,500 of equity. That is your equity and we can take the, that proceeds. We can roll that back into the program for obtaining new vehicles down the road. So by setting it up this way, there's no mileage restrictions. There's no wear and tear restrictions. You have flexibility of term. You can get out at any point. And I know many of my government partners appreciate this because they are able to upgrade the fleet to some newer vehicles that may have more modern safety features. And it also allows us to work with staff to figure out, did the vehicles that you got five, 10, 12 years ago still fit the mission of the vehicle? Or is there something else that we could get? Because we're cycling them more quickly, that's more appropriate, potentially more fuel efficient, that might fit the mission of that vehicle a little better. So any questions on that before I move on?
Any question?
Not at this point.
All right.
The reason that you're not putting a restriction on it is because obviously that what the resale on it is hooked to those actors. So if there, if you has a lot of, a lot of miles on it, it isn't going to be worth as much. If it's last year, you're going to be left. So is there the fact that you don't put that on there is really irrelevant.
Yeah, I, I would agree and just clarify that, you know, your, your mileage trends are pretty typical within what we see within government. So the book value that we use is fairly low. It's usually 10 to 20% of the original value of the vehicle. So if you had a $60,000 vehicle and it had a book value of say 10,000 commissioner, we are seeing residual values and resales on five-year-old 50 to 60,000 mile vehicles in the 40 to 60% range. I should say 40 to 50% range. So it does build usually some, some built-in cushion of equity that, that you would get back. And we want to always be conservative with those book values. Does that help clarify things a little bit?
Yeah.
Okay, sounds good. We can pay it to zero. We just don't view that as the best use of your capital. If you're going to pay it all the way to zero and then we're going to turn around and sell it for you. You know, we, we would view that as spending more on the vehicle than you really need to. And so it's really about, you know, paying for the portion of the vehicle you're using and then utilizing our marketing systems through our privatized sales system to be able to maximize resale values, which is procurement compliant and is in line with a source well contract that we do have. So any other questions at all?
No.
Okay. So really the resale is the key to the castle in terms of how we work with our clients. We don't rifle vehicles through auctions. We actually utilize the same remarketing infrastructure that our rental apartment uses. And if you, and I can imagine, obviously my rental department takes the resale of their assets very seriously and is working to do their best to maximize resale value on the box trucks, trucks and vehicles that are in the rental fleet. So we are able to piggyback off that infrastructure. Typically we're getting about 10% of a black book value, which is my industry's equivalent of blue book. We don't have auction fees. We don't have vehicles sitting at auctions, waiting to be auctioned. We generally will pick your vehicle up, bring it into one of our facilities, either with your location, either in Salt Lake City or in Denver. We'll evaluate the value of the vehicle and we'll go out and try to do what's called a max and sell over a two to three week period of time, enabling us to capitalize on resale values. And resale values have been exceptionally strong the last five to 10 years. Obviously there was a bump during the pandemic, but what we have really seen, and it's definitely confirmed with many industry sources, is that as used vehicles, excuse me, as new vehicle pricing has gone up, it's been more difficult for your average consumer to afford that vehicle, especially at some higher interest rates. And so that has put upward pressure on the used market, which has kept that very strong over the last several years. Any questions on that?
Nope.
Sounds good. So what we did, and Ryan, thank you again for putting together that information, is we got all the vehicles back into our template. And we really like to do a proof of concept. First of all, we profile all the vehicles based on age and mileage. Then we look at what would it look like to replace your fleet in a five-year period of time and do it again in years six through 10. So we really want to be able to show a long-term sustainable model. It is proof of concept. We understand that whatever we may say, we might do based on us running a fleet is going to look different for city and county partners. But we do want to be able to show you that we do have a long-term plan of how this is sustainable within any government budget. So next slide I believe is our profile. So really what I, what I'd like to start is up here. Essentially our modeling starts at proof of concept of looking at replacement of any vehicles that are seven years or older or 100,000 miles. I very much recognize in conversations with staff that you're not going to replace all of these vehicles. We are simply looking at a proof of concept to be able to show you that this is a, this is a sustainable model. And most of my government clients will look at the vehicles we're examining and say, here's really our top priorities in year one. And then we can slowly factor in other vehicles over a period of time. So we profile the vehicles. We take a look at average age, average mileage. And then based on this replacement criteria up here, we come up with a replacement plan again. It's going to smooth out. We know you're not going to do 48 this year. We're again trying to show proof of concept. I do think though, there's some interesting information that's in here, part of which is we look at about 36 vehicles that are 10 years or older. And so we simply know those vehicles statistically do tend to have a little bit higher repair costs and they've got good resale value if we can get them out a little earlier. And again, we are trying to capture the resale. the resale aspect of things. So any questions on that at all?
No.
Sounds good. So what I'd like to do now is simply prevent, prevent, present our modeling of replacing all the vehicles in five years and then again in years six through 10. Again, proof of concept. And really, we look to benchmark approximately what you're spending today based on some average mileage, maintenance costs and things like that, and then show you year over year what it would cost you to replace the vehicles. And also, if there's any savings, be able to demonstrate that. With the ancillary benefit of, in my opinion, even if it's break even, we're able to get you into more systematic approach and able to sell your vehicles more regularly and replace them more regularly. So on this sheet, what we first do is provide a baseline for what your current estimated fleet budget is. So based on you replacing the vehicles on average of 14 years is about what the average cycle is right now. You would need to have enough capital to get five vehicles per year. This would be the approximate amount of what your purchase budget would be to do that. Obviously, you've got a little bit of money coming back on these older vehicles. That's your equity on your own fleet under your current model. And maintenance and fuel is simply based off of 25 cents per mile, which is industry average on a government average, excuse me, on a fleet of this age. Fuelings based on average price per gallon, cost per mile, gallon of fuel for an annual fleet bud- budget of capital and operating expenses of about $553,000. So that is the amount of capital you have to, you would need to dedicate minus any resale proceeds from existing vehicles, plus operational expenses of maintenance and fuel. Any questions on where those numbers come from? Anything I can answer for you there?
Are those numbers that Ryan provided you?
They are not numbers that Ryan provided me, but I did go into some of your fleet budget documents and they look to be in line with what the fleet is currently costing you. I believe the fleet budget, the fleet fund was and obviously there's other factors in there, but I I'm going from memory commissioner. I think it was upwards of one to $2 million, if I recall, and that would have included some other things. Any other questions?
No.
Fantastic. So again, proof of concept, if we were to place 48 vehicles this year, you've got 24 owned, 48 leased. This would be what your lease budget would be about $413,000, but you've got approximately $417,000 of equity in those 48 vehicles that could be sold to offset the cost of getting the new vehicles. So really, in year one, you're about a break even in terms of capital expense of replacing those vehicles. Maintenance is going to come down because we're getting rid of the oldest, older vehicles and replacing with brand new vehicles on our full factor warranty. Obviously, you know, basic preventative maintenance is needing to be done on those instead of some of the larger ticket items. And then fuel comes down simply because newer vehicles are more fuel efficient than older vehicles are. And we certainly see some right sizing and right, excuse me, right typing of vehicles happen in that first year where we're able to look at some, you know, if there's something that's more fuel efficient. So total capital, total operating about $250,000 in year one. And when we take that and subtract it from the 553, your net cash position is the amount saved, excuse me, in year one of about $300,000. What questions do you have on just year one? And then I'll click through the rest of it.
Now, Andrew, does this include the sheriff's office vehicles or did we break those out separate?
It does include SO vehicles. It does not include, it does not include outfit.
Outfiting.
Correct.
So we have a lot of three-quarter ton pickups. Is there a significant difference in those in half tons? In the purchase price and the fuel mileage and the that kind of stuff?
It's a great question, Commissioner. In terms of purchase price, amazingly enough, the three-quarters and half tons have started to get pretty close. In theory, you should get a little better fuel economy with a half-ton pickup. V8 compared with a three-quarter ton V8. Resale value is going to be a little stronger on the three-quarter tons. So I generally recommend to my clients, if you need a three-quarter ton truck to to fit the mission of the work, whether it's used in plowing or road maintenance, general construction, I do recommend a three-quarter ton if there are some vehicles that are more supervisor in nature that don't need to be three-quarter ton, half tons are definitely an option. And there's a multitude of different engine types that are available now in the half-ton models of vehicles that could potentially be more fuel efficient. Again, keep in mind the mission of the vehicle and making sure it's enough engine for the need of the vehicle. Any other questions?
No, I guess just so making sure that I'm square with what you're talking about. So you're talking about basically right now, starting with half the fleet. And then leasing and then phase them out? Or are we talking starting all all new or all
Starting with
all leased vehicles to start with?
No, no, no. I think if I understand, you're you're talking about just half the fleet to begin, basically half to start with, right?
As a proof of concept, yes. I do have year one budget numbers based on what Ryan and I did, excuse me, Ryan and I discussed as top priority vehicles of 10 vehicles. And I have another budget estimate for 21 vehicles. So we simply like to show the proof of concept, big picture, knowing that this will be smoothed out. And you know, the the biggest impact to year one is simply that resale equity. Because you've just got a lot of that opportunity to bring that back in. But if you did 10 or 20 vehicles, obviously those vehicles would be available in in later years. I work with my clients just to try to figure out what makes sense. But to answer the question directly, no, we do not recommend replacing everything this year because you do have a number of newer vehicles that is just not in your best interest to to replace it this time.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Okay. So just to finish this up and then we'll move on. So this just shows year over year replacement of additional vehicles. Eventually, the own goes to zero, the least goes back to your fleet size. You can see what your lease budget does over that period of time. This model does not take inflation into account and is simply cash in, cash out. So when we actually go to implement, generally, we are rolling equity into a new payment stream to reduce costs of providing the new vehicles. But this does show you if I sell these vehicles and I bring these in, this is what the cost is, which is why that lease budget is the 621 as we get fully implemented. What ends up happening, though, is after a period of time, you are exhausting all of your equity of your own fleet. But then at year five, we are able to capture equity on the original vehicles that we sold and get that money back to you. And that is an estimate of what we feel those vehicles are worth in five years. The amount above the book value times 48 that we feel we could sell those vehicles for. So that money would be coming back into the county. And that, again, is one of the biggest benefits we offer is providing that inbound revenue stream of existing vehicles that, you know, obviously there's auctions and things like that that are available to folks, but this is what we do for a living and probably the resale of vehicles is 30% of what the rental department figures out annually is trying to maximize that dollars back on those assets. So you can see maintenance goes down, fuel goes down. So we fully implement over five years and then we repeat the process. So that's where you're seeing the 48 come back up again. This is your net cash number year over year. We recognize in some years it's a cost and some years it's a savings. But we're looking at a total 10-year savings of around $177,000. And in years six through 10, after we've exhausted the equity on the own vehicles, it's about $11,000 a year, which I would argue is fairly close to break even, but it comes with the benefit of being able to cycle freely systematically. Comes along with some potential right typing of vehicles. Most clients we work with are doing a little bit of a right sizing exercise. As vehicles have gotten older, there might be few that may not be used as much. And really, by having newer, more reliable vehicles, in many cases, we're able to help our clients evaluate if we can, you know, lower the fleet size by a few vehicles just because they have newer, more reliable vehicles. The only other thing I want to point out is here's your projected equity analysis based on the vehicles you have today, the mileage and what we project that out to be in future years. So I do want to spend a little bit of time going through the year one and year two budgets because I know that's what I was asked to do. I did want to give you the high level overview since it's been about a year since we've spoken. But before I move on, what questions do you have just on this or the concept in general?
No, we don't have any yet.
Sounds good. So I'm going to stop presenting for a moment because it seems to be a little better way for me to do this on this Google. So let's see. Okay. So hopefully I am sharing with you the year one budget estimate with 10 vehicles. Is that correct? Yep, I see it on my screen. So
We can see it.
Thank you. So Ryan had provided me with 10 vehicles that were really, you know, a potential place to start. We can do sheriff's office vehicles. That is an option for you. These were 10 vehicles that he and I looked at. We can look at doing those Ram power wagons if you want to. That is definitely an option through enterprise. I will say we don't do heavy equipment like some other folks out there. So we really are focusing on vehicles that are you know, F550 size and less. So there was approximately, excuse me, there were 10 vehicles on this list that we looked at. So I ran Ram pricing for you. I also ran Ford pricing for you, but I did not include the Ford pricing in the model for the simple reason that Ram actually has very, very attractive government incentives for 2026. I can absolutely get Ford. I can absolutely get Chevy. Ryan and I discussed it a bit. If you want to look at different makes, we can, but certainly we're looking at what's the lowest cost vehicle opportunity out there from an overall payment situation. So there was four vehicles. This is about, excuse me, this is your monthly lease payment on the vehicle. So this is your annual cost of $38,000 on the Ram regular cab without any maintenance included. Again, assumption is that Ryan will continue to maintain those vehicles in your county facilities other than warranty work. That's good to take back to dealerships. So one Ram regular cab, one crew cab. Here's your annual cost here. There was a handful of SUVs. Ryan and I talked about Nissan. It seems like a good alternative. Nissan has had historically some of the strongest government incentives out there. But I can do Chevy, I can do Ford, I can do American makes if you prefer those. We can do other foreign makes. Right now, I have very good pricing data on trucks for 2026. These are firm numbers. The 2026 estimates on the Nissan, I did include a 6% buffer to account for potential price increases. The good news is we haven't seen a large tariff bump on many vehicles. And in some cases, in Ram's case, pricing actually looks more attractive in 2026 and in 2025. So if we total up the sum of the annual lease payments, this would be your year one capital budget of $83,000. However, selling those 10 surplus units would bring an inbound revenue stream of about $54,000. So your net cash outlay in year one would be approximately $29,000 to replace 10 vehicles and be able to at least get started and get updated. So what questions do you have on this? Does it make sense? Just thought I'd ask for some comments.
Comments?
Not yet.
Not yet.
Sounds fair. So the other thing I did is because trucks are worth quite a bit of money, I took a look through the list and really tried to figure out if there were a few more vehicles that made sense from a years in service standpoint to be able to cycle those vehicles out. And I am hopefully going to get this pulled up. So this is just the sheet that I ran with the 21 vehicles. So we, I looked at Ryan's list plus adding some of the vehicles that were a bit older, more truck heavy, because obviously those resell pretty well. And you know, simply based on age and mileage, there would be recommendations for replacement. So very similar model here. We've got nine regular cabs, six crew cabs. And then a few more SUVs. You can obviously see what your total annual cost is. And one thing that I did not point out, but I would like to, is this is the amount of estimated equity at the end of the 60 months for each vehicle class, just so you've got that information. So we're estimating that with the regular cab, 2,500 Ram, you've got about $18,000 in equity simply based off your mileage patterns, which are around eight to 12,000 miles a year, depending on vehicle type. So we really look at a five-year-old vehicle with 50, 60,000 miles on it is a very attractive vehicle for folks who we sell vehicles to, and we can get very good resale dollars on those vehicles. We've been working the government space nationally for years. And we've got it pretty dialed in to be able to help our clients get considerable resale values on those particular vehicles. So if we total it all up, about $190,000 of your payment capital stream, the equity on those 132, I'm sorry, equity on the 21 vehicles about 132,000. So a net cash amount of about $58,000 in year one to replace those 20 vehicles. I have not taken maintenance savings into account. Obviously, there's those ancillary benefits of getting some repair savings that statistically happens on older vehicles that obviously isn't baked into the whole analysis. So that was the two analyses I I wanted to show you from a budget standpoint. I could I could definitely share the vehicle list with you. But I presume everybody has this information, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Perfect. So I guess I just want to take a quick break and and just see how this looks to you. And then I can kind of go through the the vehicles. But I'd imagine there may be some questions, comments that that may pop up.
So I guess that's kind of where kind of a good breaking point to find out, you know, commissioners, is this something you want to dive into further? Is it something you want to just take this information and ponder now? I mean, he's he's provided quite a bit of information. What are your thoughts?
I want to look at it more because the the last example he gave on the Rams, the Rams are generally used for the sheriff department and they have a lot more miles on them than that. So he's kind of picking the the cream of the crop there or whatever to get his his numbers and they they might not be accurate.
Is there something that you want just to expedite the conversation? Is there something you want me to? Is there something that you want just to expedite the conversation? Is there something you want me to maybe? Go back and relook at that information or is it? I mean, I guess my, my, my question would be, are we to a point where you want to even consider this? Cause rather than. If there's something where we're going down a road that you're going to be adamantly opposed to at this point. Versus do we, are we close enough there that we need to spend more time looking at it? And original conversations, I had you guys spread out through the decision making process. Of where you're at on that. So I guess that's my question to you guys is. Do we spend more time and try and drill down or is it a firm no, a firm yes? How?
And with the SO vehicles, they don't outfit them correctly. So what, what does that cost?
That's about, Ryan, correct me if I'm wrong, it's about twenty five thousand a vehicle?
Yep, depending on the vehicle, anywhere between seventeen and twenty five thousand.
That's going to be in addition, uh, uh, cost, the same cost no matter what, whether we buy them or, or we lease them. Okay. What does that do? To the resale piece? You've got that kind of money invested in them. And they take them back as a leased vehicle. Do we get that value? Do we put into those at all?
Uh, Andrew, from my understanding is no, right?
Yeah, i- if I may make a few comments, um. For better or for worse, outfit cost does tend to be a sunk expense. So. Most of the clients we work with are decommissioning those vehicles. We can do them. We can actually include a good portion of the outfit into capitalizing the lease payment. We would simply work with the outfitter that Ryan proposed to use. And we can pay that outfitter directly once they're outfit and include some of that outfit expense. Into the lease payment stream. Uh, the unfortunate reality of those vehicles though is they generally get decommissioned now. The good thing about those vehicles is because you're using Ram power wagons. Once decommissioned, they'll be good resale candidates. They're going to look a little less like an SO vehicle than, you know, a typical Tahoe or something like that from a resale perspective. If I may make a comment on the Rams and, and Commissioner. With regards to the Rams I've shown you, those would be specifically for road and bridge. That's where those numbers came from. I can provide you with Ram power wagon numbers if you would like. Those vehicles do price. Uh, considerably more than a typical road and bridge vehicle. So I can provide you some numbers there. And time permitting, I can also share with you the vehicles that we profiled. So I know SO is probably the largest needs you have and that's absolutely something we can do. Uh, from an economic standpoint, um, it's really more of a leasing the, the vehicle itself and selling it. The outfit again is just a bit of a sunk expense. So does that answer some of those questions and concerns at this point?
Yeah, it does. So the, the, the estimates you're giving are not sheriff's department vehicles. They were road and bridge department. And that makes more sense. Do you have another uh, outfitter that you use? Does, does uh, enterprise have an outfitter that they use?
We have.
Go ahead.
No, please, sir. I would like to allow you to finish.
No, that's, that, we'll stick with this question first.
Yes, sir. We have multiple outfitters we use. Um, police and SO vehicle upfitting is definitely. A uh, challenge today. I, I will not sugarcoat that. Uh, I have successfully used a few outfitters. That have worked well for us in the Denver metro area. We have some out of Salt Lake City. Uh, I have some clients that are outfitting in New Mexico or in Dallas area. Uh, due to the, the outfitters that we have available there. There are some outfitters that we don't recommend using. So we do have some good resources there. I, I can definitely work with Ryan on that. I, I. Think he's probably got some good ideas as well, but um, I, I will say that has been a challenge for all of our clients in government.
Is that challenge time? Is that what I, I've heard is it takes a long time to get them outfitted? Is that what the challenge is or is there something else?
No, that's a, that's a good question because the, the uh, it's because of the, the. Uh, one that real blanker used, I suspect that uh, flea uh. Enterprise would have, would be a lot faster.
Yeah, I, Commissioner, I'd love to tell you that that would be the case, but um, we do rely on these outfitters. And to answer your other question about why, so yeah, so it does take longer in time. There's just got to be a backlog going back to the inventory shortage of police cars that needed up to, to be outfit. They obviously didn't prove, produce enough vehicles like Tahos. So once there was vehicle availability, uh, post pandemic. Uh, many of these outfitters got fairly well flooded. Obviously there's been some price increases as well as supply chain issues with the materials they use for upfitting. And there's also been the, the exact same thing that, that's happened within the general um. Vehicle maintenance and repair space, which is a bit of a lack of labor to be able to get that done. That said, we do have different outfitters that certain clients have had better success with than others and we're happy to make some introductions there. But hopefully that answers the time question.
Yeah, thank you.
Anything else?
Yeah, but I forgot what it was.
Sorry, I got in front of you.
Well, like I said, you've got the next presentation by, you've got a similar but a little bit different presentation. Uh, for the next meeting um, from Unified. So I'm not asking for a decision today, just kind of as guidance, but if you think of questions that you want me to pose back to Andrew. You know, what if this, what if that, or you know, we can certainly come back to that.
So Andrew, as you are, I call it recycling, changing this vehicles out.
Yes.
Is that at years or miles? Where is your breaking point? What, how do we determine when it's time to get a new one? Would we be running newer every, every five years kind of thing? Did I miss that? I'm sure you've covered it and I just missed it.
That's a great question. Now there was, you know, a year's worth of data I tried to condense in a very brief time. So in general, we recommend looking at a five year term on most government vehicles. That are um, you know, three quarter ton last that don't have a lot of outfit to them, simply based on resale value. So five years, fifty thousand miles or so is a very good time for us to look at that. Whatever we do though is customizable. So whatever we might look at today and we talk about for twenty twenty seven or twenty twenty eight. We can always flex that. You can keep these vehicles longer. You can absolutely continue to finance them to zero book value. That is an option. But to answer the question, it's really a five year term we look at. Um, with the intention of be able to help you capture resale value and minimize maintenance and repair. So that answer the question?
Yeah, that's why I was, had it in my head, but sorry, I didn't hear you.
Andrew, what's the lea- what's the lease rate? What's your interest rate?
That is captured in the Sourcewell contract, uh, Commissioner, so I can get that over to you. Um, I quite frankly don't know it off the top of my head because it's a better interest rate than we give our commercial clients. So I will go ahead and get the rate um, structure over to. Vic, he'll download that Sourcewell contract and I, I say Sourcewell because most of our clients are using that for their due diligence. But if somebody were to want a solicitation and, and an RFP, that, that we'd use the Sourcewell pricing anyhow. So it'd be the same.
Right, okay.
Thanks, thank you. And I'll follow up with you.
Fantastic. Um, one last point and, and I won't go into it, but I did provide the vehicles that. We were looking at replacement. I can pull it up on the screen if you want, or you should have the information, but it's. The twenty one vehicles, you can see it's primarily, you know, pickup trucks and what departments are in and things like that. So. Would you like me to pull that up for a minute or do you have that and that's not necessary?
I think we're kind of running into a time pin, but um, if that's all right. But because you're going to get back with the other information anyways, then you can follow up at that time.
And we do have that document, so.
Great, okay. I really appreciate your time and the opportunity to speak with the county today and. Definitely I look forward to some continued conversation. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew.
Appreciate it.
Okay, moving on to line item B.
I'd like to move, Madam Chairman, I'd like to move to approve. Notice of award. An agreement for services with Cross Connect Engineering for the twenty twenty five. RBC broadband network switch upgrade and monitoring system project.
Second.
I have a motion and a second and we have Eric here.
Well, let's go from the exciting world of fleet vehicle management to. So uh, early, earlier this year, I believe in March, I put a presentation together. We were looking at usage for the. Remaining SLRF funds and LATCF funds. One of the projects that I proposed to the commissioners was to. Do a refresh on our networks, which is for the broadband enterprise uh, department. Uh, currently what we have right now is three different brands of network switches. We have our main. Core switches that exist in our data centers, both in Meeker and Rangeley, which are Juniper. And then we have brocade switches that are out at our primary towers and then we have ubiquity switches out at secondary towers. Our brocade switches at our primary towers are the oldest switches. Um, they're in the most need of being refreshed. Our main core switches, I believe, were eating to the age of about five, six years old. The biggest driver of course is being able to have a unified monitoring system and. One of the key terminologies that's been moved forward since we've done broadband is having a no touch provisioning. Uh, setup so the switches can be provisioned prior to being onsite. This would allow us to change out the switches, especially at the primary tower sites, which are difficult for. Network engineers that support staff get up to typically. The ideal situation is they have a provision switch ready to go for us. We get it up in place and plugged in, ready to go. I issued an RFP out in the month of April. We received three bids back or three proposals back. This wasn't a bid, this was an RFP. Cross Connect Engineering, High Point Networks, One Technology Corporation. The RFP was written in a manner of that the proposer would offer their best solution. For refreshing our network switches and meeting the uh, criteria of the proposal of us having. A unified system where we can monitor and uh, basically dashboard our network switches. Right now you have to be able to go into the switch and individually look at the different components of the health of that switch, right? CPU usage, um, packet loss, those type of things that tell you whether or not that switch is doing a good job. And you have to physically be able to go into that. It requires a level of access and. Uh, technical expertise that's at the higher end of network management. There's a lot of great tools now to manage those switches from a dashboard style scenario where you can get a global look at. Or an enterprise look at your switches in your network. That was part of this. Um, the three companies proposed three different manufacturers. So Cross Connect Engineering proposed a Cisco switch option. High Point Networks proposed an Extreme Network option and One Technology Corporation proposed a Juniper option. This is a lot like comparing Chevy, Toyota, you know, GMC, you know, Ford, I mean. So you're, you're comparing that, um, after reviewing the proposals, um. Cross Connect Engineering had proposed, uh, what we felt was the most comprehensive solution to meet our future needs. One of the reasons we took uh, the significant time in reviewing this is we'll be living with these switches for the next ten years. Uh, which is a lifetime in, in technology, right? And so we wanted to make sure that we were making a good choice. Within this uh, proposal, um, we came in at the two hundred and twenty six thousand dollar. Big point, uh, that had um, been set by my presentation and request for funds from the uh, SLRF and. LACPF funds. Um, we did have to do some value engineering within. Uh, Cross Connect's proposal. Um, their original proposal had a total value of three hundred and twenty seven thousand. Now, mind you that this was not a bid, so this wasn't hard money. This was based on providing the most options that they felt was um. Was uh, was beneficial to us. The other two came in at that same two hundred thousand dollar mark. However, Cross Connect had significantly more um, credits for training. And then when we asked them to value engineer, they came back and was able to come in at that two hundred and twenty six thousand, eight hundred and eighty three dollar. Budget line that we had agreed on. The one consultation to that is that we chose to leave the ubiquity switches. In place and, and plan on doing those as a, as a secondary switch next year. The unique aspect of it is that the ubiquity switches are used at the secondary solar type, is solar towers. They're not a, uh, as a significant component to the broadband network and, and. The overall network of the function, uh, network functionality. And then also. The network, the ubiquity switches are just so much cheaper than any other switches that were offered, whether it was Juniper. Cisco, uh, the Extreme Network or the, or the, um, sorry, the Juniper Extreme or Cisco option. Um, and so it's feeling that we may just remain with ubiquity at solar towers because they are DC powered switcher. And then there typically is not many radios on those switches. With that being said, uh, warranty in terms, uh, we have seven year. Licensing within this, this uh, two hundred and twenty six thousand. And we feel that this is uh, this is the first step in the partnership with Cross Connect. Uh, engineering to, to help us get these equipment done and refreshed and then continue that with. Engineering support as we go through the next seven, ten years of utilizing switches. One of the other benefits of course is that Cross Connect Engineering is also a consultant on the IT network side of it. Which also probably helped them out a lot on the proposal and having a comprehensive view because they understood already the county's IT. At our internal network versus a broadband network.
Much more expensive is the Cisco stuff than the Juniper and the.
Network switch wise, it looks like it's, because they, they revised the pricing once they got the notification. So once that was adjusted. It looks like it's about for the main switches. We are running eleven thousand, three hundred and twenty four dollars apiece for the main switches with Cisco. And or we'll just. Do the uh.
Just assuming that Cisco is going to be a lot, I mean, that's the catalyst, right?
It is, it is the nicer switch. It is, um, I think probably the, the sequence of this of. Cisco's the, is the nicer, uh, is the more used, more higher probably quality. Then you have Juniper and then you have Extreme as, uh, as I understand it. Um, one of the tough parts about that is of course is, uh, we haven't got to, like, there's no scenario where you get to use all three of it. And then really get to, get to gauge, but that's generally how the market is. With that being said, Cisco's um. For serviceability, we have many, many options. Or if we were to switch. Support for our Cross Connect. Uh for from Cross Connect to other service, um there's a lot of opportunity to that versus. You get much more specialized as you go down the list of Juniper and Extreme. We do have extreme switches in in the data center now. They're utilized um. Uh for uplink provider for broadband um switched over from Ekonops to. Extreme and we did that here. Uh about two months ago, I think. And so they're using Extreme, but we. You know, it's not something we get into or we see. What's going on in the stream, so we're still, it's not approved. Um solution, yeah. Um so let me re-get you that answer real quick, for sure.
So. I'm sorry, the extreme switches that you have, was that something we purchased or is that something that that belongs to them?
That is purchased or so that belongs to Thor.
Yeah, that's.
They're just, they're in our and they're providing our uh our switching for the for the main uplink.
Eric, while you're doing that, what what is the difference between that when you do an RFP? And a bid?
Um. The sh- the the short answer is um. When a when you're looking for a RFP, you're looking for um. A entity to provide you a a solution. So typically, they're much more of a. Um complex. Um service that you're gonna look at versus. If you're buying a widget or you are.
If you're total, they're gonna tell you how to do it and what it would cost and the bid is, I want six of these and install.
Yeah, so um generally like your engineering services, architectural services. Those soft services are proposals and then. Your your actual like contractor, because that you usually use, you usually use the proposal to then define. Those detailed things to go out and then purchase.
Vicky, is this? These were things that we were. Funding we would use for these. Is the money we thought might get clawed back? Or was this in the budget anyway?
They were in the budget, so well, let me think about that. I believe they were all in the budget. It was just we were taking them from CCI T F versus. Um at CCI T F and it seems to me there was another. One that we we had budgeted for um and instead we moved those to the.
Okay. So as long as.
So the um. The price difference is actually in favor of the Cisco, the. And and like I said, with. These options, right? They're not necessarily apples to apples as you're providing the solution, so. The original Juniper networks, their uh switches were fifteen thousand thirty-six dollars. Versus the eleven thousand for the Cisco. I think where uh some of the delta came in the pricing once, the engineering service side of it. We also have the training credits in it and then the the other the other difference was um. The Juniper was a five-year warranty and licensing where the Ciscos have seven-year warranty and licensing. So we gained a little bit more on the seven-year. Warranty than we had pre- uh previously estimated.
So you're you're uh saying these are ten-year. Project, so the last five years we're gonna be running without any.
Well, last three years.
In this.
Um usually what will happen is that um around that five-year mark. Um.
You're in the contract.
Yeah, so I'm. I'm not gonna pretend to be an expert, but I've seen, like, for example. Our Juniper switches right now, which are slated to be ten years. Um. It's really kind of dependent on that manufacturer's like how long they're gonna, there's like a sale date. That they're gonna continue to offer that that, you know, piece of equipment for sale. How long they're gonna provide warranty and service to? And then, of course, then how long they're actually usable. So like, for example, the brocade switches have been going for a long time, right? Um so they've been out of out of warranty and and the um and brocade aren't offering those exact switches, so. If those switches go down, um we would replace them with a different new brocade.
Yeah.
And that's. That's kind of the game they play.
Yeah, well, I I understand that because with this type of. Equipment, the technology advances so fast that ten years is a long time and you probably are not gonna get there.
Yeah, and so like, for example, they kind of do a. They always like, we're not here to scare you. So like a few months back, it was actually after we've already approved this. It was like. Probably two weeks after we had already approved this. Juniper's sales rep and One Technology got ahold of me and they said, listen. Your EX forty-six hundreds are now like Juniper has slated that they are. Ending those those units, but they go, don't worry. Um they got another two years till they totally end it and then you got another few years of service. But after that, we're not sure, real certain where where they end.
Okay.
Hey, anything else?
What's the timeline?
Um we're getting ordered now, uh as soon as. You guys put ink paper. Um we're gonna probably try looking at October timeframe of getting them. In place. Uh definitely by everything by the end of the year, uh up and running on the system.
Anything else?
No.
Will please call the roll.
Scritchville, hi.
Overton.
All right.
Oh, Heron, hi.
Motion passes, moving on to line item C.
Madam Chair, I would move um. The purchase of security access equipment and services for the next phase of twenty twenty-five security system upgrade project. From Stone Security in the amount not to exceed forty-nine thousand, four hundred and seventy dollars and fifty-three cents.
Second thought.
I have a motion and a second and we have Eric here again.
Trevor, do you want me to take this one?
Either way, it's fine with me, however you want to do it.
Okay. So uh we had budgeted in twenty twenty-five to do security system access upgrades and CCTV system. Uh this. When looking at the security access system upgrade. We were shifting from uh our operating system of premises to Linell S two. Um one premises is no longer serviced, uh you no longer provide as as an operating system. You can no longer. Upgrade that operating system. So moving to Linell S two was uh was the best decision to make so that we can network our security access system. So this is the system that when you go and you badge, it lets you into a door in the in the Justice Center. Uh with that being said. We have uh for the most part, we're able to utilize all the existing systems in the uh. In the in Rio Blanco County by just going in and doing a a flash of their control boards. However, there was a number of boards that were not compatible with. Uh with being able to flash those and just have the new operating system on it. Um. The main culprit being the courthouse. Um. My understanding at the point where we moved into the courthouse was that. We were matching the system that we had at the Justice Center. However, they took a slightly different approach and and they used what was considered a um. So each door that you go into the building has its own controller, power board and and system that's up on the ceiling. This is entirely different than how we we've done it. Prior to it and how we've done it post the the courthouse. And so within this forty-nine thousand is um. Is the new boards that we need for the courthouse to be able to finish moving the courthouse to the new operating system. There's a few other odd boards out there. We have to. Uh replace the board at the Justice Center, but it's just the board, not not any of the the uh door controllers. And then um we also have uh the wiring that needs to go because. We're gonna do um centralized panels in the in the elevator shafts. In the courthouse rather than having the controller at each individual door. Did that cover it, Trevor?
Yeah, that's that's the basics. Yep.
Any questions?
What is this getting? What is it? Is there gonna be any any different, any better, any?
You're uh you're not gonna see a difference on uh usability. Like because you don't see it now, right? Like you 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 use your badge, right? That badge opens the door. There's a couple of things. One is current system we use, without getting too detailed, there's much more. Uh sophisticated systems that add height and level of secure uh security that. In our current system. Um that helps us by having a network system, it it's able to tie to our camera system so that. For example, if we if we have an issue, we can tie building access and date and time to when. Uh also the camera, video, recording systems, and so it's completing that that loop on our end so that. We uh we know what's happening in the buildings and. When it's.
Also, real quick, this comes down to. These single door controllers being tied to premises, which is no longer supported and the single door controllers aren't really supported by a modern. Uh security access system, so if we don't do anything with them, they kind of become useless over time once once they fail.
Thank you.
And I I think I had heard at one point you were thinking about rather than having. Hard keys, it would be. Badging in to each office and stuff too, is that true?
Our ultimate goal is that you badge into. Rio Blanco County's building.
But this doesn't, this isn't part of that. This is just the doors.
This this is the, this is like that next step. I see that uh. Uh it always seems to be the best is to do a hybrid, so once these panels are in place. Um having the facilities team systematically over time add a door and a reader and a door and a reader. Is much easier to chew on this and if we were to just send it out to bid, it would be. It'd be some significant change. Uh with everybody having that. It's just like the next phase in. Making sure that we're providing adequate security for our facility.
Thank you. Right, thank you. Uh please call the roll, Overt.
Hi.
Oh, Heron.
Hi.
Scritchville, hi.
Motion passes, moving on to line item D.
Madam Chairman. I move to. Award the CDAG number twenty-five dash EEO dash O two grant resolution for the twenty twenty-five Meeker. Airport Culper Field. GA Ramp Reconstruction Project.
Yes, now in real terms. So when it, oh, second, sorry. Hi, Eric.
My truth ready to start discussing this thing. Um go ahead.
All right, I'm gonna I'm gonna translate this.
Thank you.
Guys, okay.
I like translations.
So uh CDAG is the Colorado Division of Aeronautics Grant Program. Um. The uh EEO um Echo Echo Oscar is the identifier for the Meeker Airport. And so the way the grant works, right, is. Or the way the project's funding source works is we have. Uh FAA funding, so the documentations that you've signed. The date for FAA was. We're gonna one consolidate our entitlement and build funds, so that was two of them. Bucket, create the FAA bucket for this project. Then there was the FAA grant. That you then signed previously that said, okay, here is the grant for the. It's basically two point one million dollars of the three point four. This is the, in any of these projects, we have a local match and then C dot Aeronautics. As the state has a match, so this is the C dot Aeronautics match for for the grant. That matches their funds, and so when we do this project. Um we'll have the three funding sources, us local. FAA federal. And then Colorado Division of Aeronautics state. So this is the last, one of the last grant one. We will have other. RFARs and a bunch of other stuff for you to sign that has, we'll have. Bunch of acronyms for it too.
Thanks. Okay, so how much money are we talking about on this? Sorry.
Nope, these are good questions, staffs. Just I end up with like fifteen tabs open.
Somebody else was having that conversation this morning.
I'm the same way, Eric.
And then, by the way, there's a.
Here.
It's always how the calculation.
Okay, it's in here, but yeah, it's sitting right here, so.
I'm looking in here, I don't see it.
And then the grant is fifty-three local cash. Federal grant.
It's in the AI.
It gives me a summary. Really quick summary of all my contracts and grants and.
Shooting.
Cheating.
Don't really need a big summary.
And then we uh on the project, we we did our pre-construction meeting yesterday. Um the contractors getting the work done, uh getting, you know, insurance and cementals and that that stuff done, and we're looking at a. First week of August start date for the project and they'll have seventy calendar days to get it done.
First week of this August?
Oh, wow, okay. Cool.
Anything else?
No.
No.
Will please call the roll. Oh, Heron, hi.
Perchill.
Hi, Overton.
All right.
Motion passes, moving on to line item E. Um should we, let's start with the discussion. First, because it's a discussion. On the DOLA grant. Um. Deobligating. The DOLA grant.
Yeah, so um about three years ago, we uh we had budgeted um a hundred thousand dollars to do some work at Columbine Park. Uh we had deemed the priority was doing a. Um. Kind of an expansion to the main office building out there and a few other things. Um. And and we kind of had a a broad scope that we wanted to improve the office and and. Maybe look at a potential spot to house the um. The four-H offices and and different things out there for Columbine Park. Uh then. The idea was put in place that maybe we leverage a DOLA grant. Typically, DOLA tier-two grants are a fifty percent match and they're up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And so what we decided was we would use our hundred thousand dollars to go after a DOLA grant. To utilize for um doing improvements at Columbine Park. We met with our DOLA grant representatives and and gave them our ideas and and it ranged from maybe we do. Arena roping shoots, um office remodel, those type of stuff. It was at that point where we were urged from our DOLA representative to brand this out of the. Improve as a uh improving the office space as an emergency operations center and evacuation site. Project area. Um and that would be our best bet to be um advantageous in securing the DOLA grants, so we we said, okay, and then. We we felt that at that time that improved the office. So we we said, okay, and then we we felt that at that time that improved the office, we could then expand that. Potentially may even have the board meetings out there, certainly have four H, and that seemed like a. Uh, a bit beneficial project. Given the site size of the project right now, that office is nine hundred square feet. Uh, we thought that we would do a moderate expansion to it of another nine hundred square feet. We uh we tried to keep scope down and not doing anything with bathrooms. We were leaving the bathrooms alone and. And basically taking the roof off and doing a. A uh a new frame structure for the roof and an expansion and uh. And then we looked at meeting a couple different needs that the county had out there and also looking at improving that site. We submitted that project. We were. Uh, successful in being awarded that hundred thousand. So now we have two hundred thousand dollars in the project. We tried to save money in the fact that typically you have an architect manage engineering services. And architectural services to do that. We needed drawings to be able to build the project. Um. We elected to be that coordinator, and so we individually contracted with Civic Forum. For architectural service and Big Horn Engineering to do the engineering service for the uh. HVAC system and then, of course, SGM for structural. Um, I felt like we did not go out. Get crazy with our design. We had a very moderate design of doing exactly that, adding nine hundred square foot, opening it up. Doing a roof. A new roof on it with tresses. Um, because of the increased size of the building, we would have to add HVAC. That ties a whole different other requirements with DOLA on making sure you're high energy efficient. You can't use natural gas, so these are electric heat pumps. We fell into all those different things. We also were very, it was it was close on. The classification of it being a EEOC. There's actually a whole building code. Requirements for EEOC with having emergency backup power and a few other things that we. We felt weren't necessary for the overall goal, but um to keep the project as low and efficient as we could. We completed that design. And then we submitted out to bid. First round of bids, our low bid was in the five hundreds, five hundred twenty five thousand. And our high bid was over a million dollars and it it shocked us, but construction costs have been run away since twenty twenty. We said, okay, well, we've done this before. Um, we had this issue occur when we were doing the Fairfield remodel where. We had sent out the bid as as just being a full package and we've gotten some significantly high bids. Um, we said, okay, well, we'll step up and be a general contractor and we'll individually bid those that work out. Uh, at that point, we came in back with the bids and the bid came in with all the different subcontractors, and a few of them were pretty reluctant. We have to be cautious of doing this because. If a subcontractor has bid under a general contractor, that general contractor and subcontractor typically have a long term relationship, and so they're. Pretty reluctant to turn around and then bid with us directly. But there was a few of our subcontractors that had done work with us. We'd also were gonna elect it doing quite a bit of work self-performed, which is always a risky. Um, a risky solution, but like I said, with the Fairfield. I think the bid had come in at like the low bid had come in at like five hundred thousand. We were able to bring it in under the original. Uh, project um budget of three hundred and seventy five thousand by doing that. So you you can do that. So when we put those subcontractor bids together, it came in at three hundred and seventy five thousand, which would have been a significant savings under the lowest bid. However, still, that left us a hundred and seventy five thousand dollars short. Um. I've looked at the drawings and and everything, and of course, resources have changed a little bit in my department. We've had other projects and. And so really, the the answer is, do we? Do we come in with another hundred and seventy five thousand into this project? And and I'd ask the commissioners at that. During our budgeting for this year and and you guys are hesitant on that, and I think. You know, properly do. And and I say, I think it's time to. Kick this back to DOLA. Um, given their very narrow scope. Of what they want us to do with this money, it's just not feasible with the construction costs right now. And also given all the other demands on the the county's resources. That's how I feel. That's my my advice to the board.
Can I ask you? If we didn't have. I heard you say the whole high energy efficiency and all that stuff. If that requirement was not there. Would we have been able to do this, do you think, within our budget?
I I don't think so with uh. Everything material wise has just gotten.
Crazy.
Exorbitantly expensive. Um. Even if you were just to switch over to like a forced air furnace, like you would save. You'd save some thousands there, but not a hundred thousand. You know, I think when we when we were looking at three hundred and seventy five thousand. There are, it's, you always run that danger in the project of like cutting it so much that it doesn't ever meet the original intent or need. And then it doesn't make anyone happy. So you end up spending enough money. More than what you wanted, but then now you've cut it so much that it doesn't. Um. So I I I just think with given the scope and then, of course, also. Um. Like identifying it as an EEOC means that we have to like. We should be meeting things to meet, pass that straight face test on on what we're doing with this project.
I just wonder if our regulations were shutting us down again.
If we can't use natural gas, we're not doing it.
It it would it would it would have saved some money, but the other side of it too is um it wouldn't have saved enough.
Enough money.
It steered it back into that two hundred thousand. Um, this is the first time I've ever had to do this. So.
So a little concern I have, being a previous grant manager. When you turn a grant back over. Sometimes it hinders you from getting future grants. Have you had the conversation with DOLA on this and and us doing this?
I've not spoken directly with uh, so our rep is Dana. Um. Yeah.
Oh, you have?
Yeah.
And what was his response?
Um. His response was uh, two or three months ago was get it back. I need that money.
Okay.
And there again being more to grant anyway, so it didn't matter.
I I think that landscape, you know, we we definitely, that's always a significant weight and, you know, as as a track record goes for the county. Um, our first major grant was the design of the Justice Center, and since then, we have been nailing these projects. Left and right, all the way through. And this is the first thing. That I've I've ever had to do this. And so I think that it does show a pretty good record of. And if there was any other way I could swing it, so. You you'd have a whole air would be doing work.
So is it me?
It is.
So I would move to deobligate the funds associated with the DOLA grant. EIAF dash oh eight three seven two. The RBC Emergency Operations Center and Evacuation Site Project. Due to insufficient availability, available county funds. To complete the project as originally scoped, resulting from escalating construction costs.
Do we need to add to that? Uh, notify DOLA?
So I I have their instructions, so we just go through their portal and that's how they they requested that we.
But we do, do we need to officially turn down that during a, in a meeting?
That's what this is.
We're we're.
Yeah.
All we're doing here is is saying we're not gonna use our money.
We're deobligating the funds, which means that you're having to tell them we're not gonna take.
Okay, I thought that was our money, not theirs.
As long as you will, I'm second.
I'll second.
Unless I'm reading it wrong. I could be reading it wrong.
No, because it's funds associated with the DOLA grant, so.
I I use their terminology. They told me that I needed to.
Specifically, I'll do that.
Will you please call the roll? Scritchfield.
Hi.
Overton.
Hi.
Well, Herring.
Hi.
Motion passes moving on to line item F.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Eric.
Madam Chairman, I move to approve the amendment of four of the AAA. Grant award between Area Agency on Aging. Of the Northwest Colorado and the Rio Blanco Department of Social Services.
Second. You have a motion and a second? Um, wow. Do you have any updates on this?
This is just part of the award series.
Yeah, this is part of the award series where we've got two more awards after this. Alexis is on if if uh we have specific questions, but. I'm the, pretty, pretty straightforward, and it's just basically the contract we do annually with them for some nutrition program.
So I'm looking for the amount.
Fifty seven thousand. Knew it's a change too, but I couldn't remember the change.
You guys have any questions?
I don't know.
You?
Oh, that was mine.
And uh, please call the roll.
Overton.
All right.
Oh, Herring.
Hi.
Scritchfield. Hi.
Motion passes moving on to line item G.
So I would move to approve the Forest Service Project Agreement twenty five dash RO dash one one zero two one five zero zero dash zero two eight. Entitled Road Work on the Buford Newcastle Road.
I will second that so that we can discuss it.
I have a motion and second. We have Reese.
Uh, actually, that would be through Roden Bridge.
Okay.
Um, that that is not available, so he had given me the information on that. Basically, it's the same agreement we typically do year after year, uh where we purchase the mag chloride. And then we apply it and then they pay us back to cover the cost of mag chloride plus our operator's time. And um it's been very beneficial in the past. Uh, there's, so it ends up being no county out of pocket funds. Um, in fact, we make just a little bit extra over. They give us a a fixed amount that they, it's a little more than what the actual cost is.
It's my understanding that usually that goes on the County Road Eight. And we were late this year, and so now we're done County Road Eight, so now we're gonna go up on Buford Newcastle Road. I'm wondering where the money came from to do County Road Eight. If we didn't have this money.
Now, I don't think that it maybe County Road Eight going up further than. Uh, because it's not on county roads. I mean, that that's what the Forest Service is giving us the money for. I think it's, I thought it's always been Buford Newcastle.
That's the way I understood the other day, but I may be wrong. I I. Really that, but what I would like to. See is is where we made and why we made, you know.
Our policy on mag.
I was just gonna say.
And I know that that is uh working on that. Uh, there is not one that we can find. There is not an actual. Policy on that. Again, that was, this agreement we've actually had out there since twenty. What's the original number on it? I think it's been out there since like twenty ten.
I know it's not the first one I've seen.
No.
And I would just say I've met with um Curtis and Erin the other day, totally other topics and stuff, but they did. Say they greatly appreciate this this partnership because they wouldn't get them done without, they don't have the equipment to do them. And so um because there's this and what else do we do? Because it's not just.
No, there's another.
Or yeah, ripple creek, right? So I I guess I was a little surprised to see that it was only Buford Newcastle. We don't tie the two together.
Yeah, I think there's two different contracts.
Oh, is it? Okay.
Yeah. I recall right.
And I would just say, um, you know, travel on both of those roads. It makes a difference if it's got that mag on it for. People traveling and and the hunters or whatever else is up there. Um. I would just say going on up on County Road. Eight, I guess it's eight that goes on up after it gets off of the. Um, hits the dirt road from there on up. Um. I'm afraid that's gonna degrade quickly. It's already starting to degrade a little bit, but the whole site of the conversation. Um. So I guess, do you have concerns, Doug, with the partnership working with Forest Service on this and making sure that it's? Um.
No.
Because it's contracted. It's not a, okay, why are we doing it?
I feel I have concerns, but I don't know. My facts are not. Straight enough that I can say it right now. I will investigate it and get with it.
I believe what your your question is, is versus this particular agreement is specifically to do. Um, Buford Newcastle, and you're wondering about how do we finish out County Road Eight? How did we finish County Road Eight? Is that what your concern is? Versus this partnership?
Well, the partnership I'm great with.
Okay.
I I just, it's just money in it. And now I'll talk to you later.
Okay.
It's just money.
I never thought I'd hear Doug say that word.
I I will say that I had a conversation with Route County Commissioner about us doing this. Um, for the last few years that I've been a commissioner and she, one, she was surprised that we had this. And now she's like, well, how can we get the same agreement and partnership? So I will say that that. From her perspective, she was glad to hear that we had something like this set up and.
Curtis does a good job, and that's. Just to give kudos to the BLM and the Forest Service Office at Meeker, Rio Blanco. They're in a good position.
And I will be thrilled when they decide to do that agreement. So the road is as good a shape on their side as it is on our side. Because when you're going, you can tell where the line is at. Because the rest of it's washboarded to no end. That'd be awesome if they would get started doing that.
All right, will you please call the roll? Oh, Herring.
Hi.
Scritchfield.
Hi.
Overton.
Hi.
Moving on to line item H.
Uh, so commissioners, I gave you the budget calendar, printed it for you. There was a couple. I just wanted to go through the dates. To confirm that those dates meet with everyone. There was a couple of different. Things when I got into that, I was like, okay, wait a minute, this may be a conflict. So let's just look at it again before we adopt that. This does not include your one on one, basically, um, the. Uh, budget scrubs. So the budget scrubs, I will come back to you individually with your departments, one would coordinate those times. So it does not include the budget scrubs, because this is only. This is the piece that gets published. Um, I was fine. I believe all my dates were able to. To do up until the last four, November third, I think, um, I've got from you guys earlier would be the evening meeting. Say start at five o'clock. That would be where we present it to the public, allow public comment. They can come in and they can talk and say, I don't like this and I want this moved and, you know, that kind of thing. Um. Again, it's not to explain the budget to them, but it is certainly they can question and say, why are you allocating this amount of money for this, that, or the other? So that one, I would like to have an evening meeting on the fifth. It could could be virtual. Um.
November fifth is what we're looking at now.
November third. It, I thought that's what I had heard from you guys, was November.
That Monday or Wednesday.
And I'm okay with either of those dates. What would you prefer, Monday or Wednesday?
I'm good with that. I would just.
I'm okay with it.
Okay, so let's just do uh November third then. That's okay. That's a Monday. And I'll send you an invite on that one.
Okay.
Then the next one. Uh, so uh the assessor uh makes any final changes in the assessed valuations. Um, we can have um your final budget adoption. You have to approve the budget before. We can um certify the taxes and levy the taxes, so. We could do it on the tenth um or any time between the tenth and the fifteenth. The fifteenth is the statutory deadline, so I'd like to avoid it if possible. Um, just because if we need to correct something, we can correct it before the. That Monday, and I believe the fifteenth is on a Monday, I believe.
It is.
Okay, so I mean, but what does, what would you prefer to do on that one? And this one is actually a fairly quick meeting. You're talking probably. Uh. Fifteen to twenty minutes once you work through the resolutions. It's because the public discussion has already happened. You do have to allow for public comment, but you can stick with your three minutes per. Thing. I mean, but again, hopefully that night meeting will. Thing, I mean, but again, hopefully that night meeting will, would have any comments. They can always attach comments to the budget, written comments to the budget. But you're gonna adopt it as is and then if you need to change it, you can change it by a resolution, by a actual amendment. In the next year, which has not happened yet.
So we're looking at more than a fifteen-minute meeting. By the time we read through everything, we're probably looking at about an hour. That's what it seemed like it took last year.
Probably, I mean, it, it doesn't have to go real long. I mean, I just, you know, if you have. You know, several people that wanna, you know, make some kind of comment. That could be. But I certainly don't expect it to last. I mean, if the November third meeting, that's where really your time could be utilized. There, um, answering constituent questions if anybody.
So I guess for me, as long as I can. I mean, I can step away for about an hour or so. I'm not, I'm completely open on the twelfth. But my tenth and eleventh, I'm not, but I can, if I can step away and stream it. Get online, I mean, um. I can, I can make that work.
Fine on the twelve too, for that matter.
How about you on the twelfth?
I'm good on the twelfth.
You'd rather have it on Friday, the twelfth?
Yeah.
Cause it's not an evening meeting.
Uh, no.
Uh, what time? Let's do it morning.
Nine?
Never.
Nine o'clock?
Yeah. What day?
And Sean, I'll send you a list of them as, and then we will advertise, cause these are all the ones that. Sean will know, yeah.
So I have a question on this.
Mm-hmm.
So on September ninth, you have on here work session to finalize salaries, related personnel expenses and capital projects. But if we haven't done our budget scrubs by then, how are we going to finalize those things?
The budget scrubs should be done by September ninth. We have all of August and all of September to get the scrubs done.
Well, but you're at the beginning of September, if you're looking into September for budget scrubs.
Well, yeah, I mean, I wouldn't, as long as we can get everybody done, I was, you know, at the. Latest, I was targeting. That all of August and all of September, to have scrubs completely done, so that you've got the, when you're doing your. Overall budget.
My only issue with that is that's my pelt fly-in, that's when I'll be traveling. Um. That's a proud, and, and it's a, I know it's a B O C C meeting day. As well, so were you wanting to do that work session in the morning?
Um, that's. Would be up to you guys and if we need to tweak that, we can tweak that.
We're gonna do it eleven thirty at night.
Midnight.
Which is one thirty the next.
Come on, guys. No, if you want to change that date, we certainly can. I just, um, in fact, I thought. Jennifer, I thought you gave me those dates. Yeah, you did, cause we were talked about, we could do it on the ninth and then push it off to the fifteenth if we needed more time.
I said if you did it in the morning work session. Before the B O C C meeting, cause then I could. Do a later flight. I don't wanna be too late because it is to D C. Um, but if we did it that morning.
And then the fifteenth, you said is still would.
I'm gonna be tough to make the fifteenth.
This conversation will probably be. Again, we're gonna have a pre uh, a draft personnel expenses where I've asked Laura to. Basically have a high, medium and low, um, as we work through the rest of the budget to try and figure out where we're gonna be at. Um, so hopefully the personnel expenses won't be as much of a contention. I'm sure it will be. Capital projects could be. A pretty short conversation. It just depends on what you guys. Want to do for capital projects and um. So again, it can be as lengthy or as short.
What about the eighth? Any reason we couldn't back that off to the morning of the, or the. Monday, the eighth for the work session and spend the whole. So we'd be sure we get it all done in one day. And then that would maybe. Free up Jennifer's concerns. And maybe not go into the fifteenth where I probably won't be here.
I guess I, my concern still is, is if we're not done with budget scrubs, we're not gonna be at a place. And so I, right. And so. In my mind, I would like to have it mid-September, yes, just in case we don't get through those budget scrubs. And then we're. We're, I, I wouldn't, I would not wanna have this conversation until those budget scrubs are done.
And I think the budget scrubs have got to be done. I don't know a reason why they wouldn't be, but the dead, the problem we're gonna have is that. Um, if that September twenty-third, I mean, is there gonna be too much change? That, that is that final, September twenty-third is that final work session with the commissioners. So that we can finalize the budget book, because then we have to have it. Our notes. Published for two weeks and then the budget hearing.
So could we, where, what does your guys eighteen look like?
September eighteen.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I have a virtual meeting at eleven, but.
Those Naco meetings and stuff, well, let's see, cause. At one thirty, but I, yeah, those are not.
That's just not, I'm good with that. You know how much sleep I would get with.
That's recorded, right?
I mean, so I could do the eighteenth as well.
In the morning.
Yeah.
What about the eighteenth in the morning? What about you?
I'm good.
Okay, so we're talking about taking off the. The ninth and the fifteenth and doing it just one morning of the eighteenth?
That's what I think. That's just my opinion.
Okay, well, that just, you know, the only thing on that is that is gonna put the pressure on you to make the decisions quickly and that's not a bad thing. You know?
You don't know about me and how I need to ponder. Okay, well, we're not gonna have time to ponder, it better be done. So the.
Before the twenty-third.
Mm-hmm.
Right?
I'm sorry?
Before the twenty-third. That's where we're really having that final, final. So we'd have from the eighteen.
Right, the final work session is where we make any last, really where you make any last-minute tweaks. Um, that's where I've actually, um, you know, pulling together the last of the information to publish the book. And then the book gets published. So again, the, the times where in, you know, you don't necessarily have to have those previous two conversations. Um. It's just, you know, can you get through all that information? To wrap it up. We actually covered C I P about four times last year. And going back and forth on projects, which was kind of a frustration. Um, from the directors, because we would talk about it and then we'd kinda say, okay, well, let's take a look at it again and then we, you know, come back and look at it again and come back and look at it again. Well, this would force you to do, we're gonna make a decision on personnel, we're gonna make a decision on C I P and we're down the road.
Well, but if it's on the eighteenth. And you, and you really don't have your budget hearing. Notice a budget hearing is the twenty-ninth. So I'm hearing you say the twenty-third, but is that a, a imposed deadline?
Or that.
We, I mean, if the push comes to shove, we could extend that over to a day or two. I mean.
Yep.
So it's not.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, cause I mean, it's not like, it's our own imposed deadline, it's not somebody else's.
Exactly, yeah, the publishing. You know, you do have those dates where you could do stuff, it just allows me to finish up the book before. Um. And again, on the fourteenth. That's where I present it to you guys and we go over it. But it's um, no public. Comment, I mean, they could make public comment in the very beginning of the meeting, like a regular meeting, it's not the hearing. It's not where you have to let them do that piece, so. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so where you're saying, it just says administrator, September twenty-ninth through October sixth, publish notice.
Yep.
So is that meaning you just have to have it published sometime between the twenty-ninth and the sixth?
I have to publish both those days in order to have the hearing on the fourteenth.
Twenty-sixth, okay, it's not between them, it's and.
Yeah, and, but I could actually take this off the calendar, because you don't necessarily. As long as we have the date fixed. That September twenty-ninth and September, and October sixth. Doesn't have to be on the budget calendar, that's really more for me.
Right. Okay. So. So I guess just, cause I don't wanna back us in a corner. And I will tell you, being my first year especially. Be prepared, I'm gonna need to ponder some things. I'm just forewarning you. So if we have that meeting on the eighteenth, you know, a lengthy meeting. If we need to go longer, we've got a couple more days there.
Mm-hmm.
To deal with. If I, if I understand it right.
And we can always set special meetings, that, but, but the problem with your calendars is trying to coordinate something. Now, again, the other part to this too is. Um, remember as a quorum, um, to meet as a work session or to make a decision, if it's a, a formal meeting, you have to have two commissioners. So. That would be the only caveat to that, that if for some reason someone cannot be there, we could still meet as long as I've got two.
So why don't we go ahead and figure. Another day for one to calendar it and if we don't need it, we can cancel it.
Okay.
On budget stuff. I know you don't like the budget calendar things when we don't. We're not gonna have it, but. To keep.
So before October fourteen.
And, and I'm not gonna say that I will be a pain, but I'm just preparing you.
Another one before October fourteen, is what you're saying, gotcha, okay. I hear you.
Because like I say, uh, just. It's gonna take me a little while to catch up.
And then I do have a question on the twenty-third. Um, for September twenty-third, it showed the budget hearing work session. But it's scheduled over the same day as the regular board meeting, I'm just trying to find out if I'm needing to reschedule the regular board meeting. Or if we're just trying to.
We already decided we're canceling that.
The twenty-third one is.
Yeah.
But, right, isn't that the conversation we had earlier?
The meeting. No, that was the August one. Last week in August, it canceled because the A G N C meeting.
Yes.
Yeah.
No.
Yeah, that'd be separate, separate ranging.
Not a good idea.
So either move one or the other one day. I mean, I'm open on the twenty-fourth as of now.
No, I'm not.
Doug's my easy one. He just said he'd make it work.
And I'm open on Monday too, if you are.
What about the twenty-fifth? September twenty-fifth.
I'm okay with that.
What about September twenty-fifth? Moving the, the works, final. Budget work session to there and leaving the range, the B O C C meeting.
Oh, what day?
September twenty-fifth.
I was looking, I think that's.
Moving the twenty-third to the twenty-fifth. Budget. Let me, cause I didn't create it. And not reschedule this. Oh, is it new time?
So the twenty-third will be your regular commissioners meeting.
Mm-hmm.
And then the twenty-fifth will be the budget.
Yeah.
Meeting on the eighteenth. Um, they just said A M that is what I. Okay, I haven't got that far yet.
Are you using a paper calendar?
I love my paper calendar.
Are you looking for the time on November twelve?
Yeah, I've got that. Yeah, November twelve, she's, I have the twelve, December twelfth. For nine.
She's on first, she's on second.
So do you wanna start, say at nine? That gives, are you calling in Jennifer?
Which, what day are we talking about?
Uh, so I'm talking about the twenty-fifth, cause I'm not necessarily thinking about the commissioners meeting, but the twenty-fifth. It's all about me and my needs and budgets.
Twenty-fifth. Um, I could be there.
September.
Yeah, I can, I can be there, it doesn't matter, either way.
You wanna say nine?
Sure, that works.
Okay.
Are we gonna have an end time for that, just so I know the publishing?
I would put an end time, yep, um, and that's gonna be the same way with the public hearing. We're gonna start at five. And when the last person walks out. We're not gonna hang out and wait for other people to show up.
Okay, yeah.
Yep.
And that's November third.
Yep. Which will start at five o'clock, so it starts at five and then. Allows public comment through that, they can, it's a public hearing is what that is, so.
And then, yeah, on the. September eighteenth, if I can get the time so that I know what time can I publish that for. That one that we combined the two, for the ninth and the fifteenth and move it to the eighteenth. For the work session.
Okay, so. Who's on first, she's on second, so the September ninth. That one is going away.
Yes, that's what I have, is it goes away.
Uh-huh.
And the fifteenth goes away.
And then we change that to the eighteenth.
Eighteenth.
Covers both of those. But at what time are we starting?
Nine A M?
Let's do it.
Is there a time period where you, it can't go past a certain time on that one?
I, I have, I have a meeting at eleven. I need to be at that. Cause it's a, it's child welfare stuff and it's human services stuff.
Um, so the eighteen, it'd not be so great then, for how long?
Um, well, it's. They go two hours.
So does it need to be in afternoon?
And I think Commissioner Scrutfield had a bunch of stuff on the afternoon that day.
Yeah.
So we could always start it recess, come back to it. And we, if we just take that day and block it out.
Mm-hmm.
And then when I need to jump on my other meeting, we can recess and then come back and then when you, we can just kinda work around that.
These that I've got, cause you're right, I have three in the afternoon listed there, but they're. They're webinars and stuff that I don't have to be. On, the ones Northwest C D C.
And we can recess that though, I mean, we can.
It's three o'clock, so it's not bad.
So just put us out all day that day. And then we'll just kinda have to float. Be flexible.
And then I can ponder in the middle when she's asked to another.
Although having that meeting in the middle of a budget meeting, yeah, you're gonna be, I may be saying no to everything.
Just no.
Sorry, we don't have the money.
We got no.
Well, it does make it easier to budget when you ain't got no money.
Pretty straightforward, doesn't it?
It is pretty straightforward. No.
Everything's no, all the way across the board.
So on the eighteenth, we're starting at nine. And then just going through whenever we can.
The twenty-first, if we start at nine and go as long as we need to.
Mm-hmm.
And we have November third that we start at five and go until we don't go with anyone.
Money's gonna be October.
For the fourteen.
Over fourteenth, do you have that one, Chris?
Uh, yeah, but I did have a start time on that.
Um. What do you guys? Think on that, that, that's the one that it's not gonna be really public comment, they can make it at the very beginning of the meeting. As you start it, but basically that's just making the budget available. And from that point, the budget book is printed. And it's saying, here's the budget book, it's now at the recorder's office. So, but they're not gonna be drilling down into that.
Why don't we make it for after? Just right after our B O C C meeting that day. Which says till two, I mean, it says that, but.
I think we own the budget.
Yeah.
And will that be a work session or is that an actual?
That's an actual meeting.
Right.
It is a. Yep.
So the way that day would flow is a work session. Commissioner meeting and then this.
Budget.
Right.
For a long day, in other words.
So I'll just make. So I'm just making sure, because I am gone. November fourteenth through the twenty-seventh. But none of this is in there. Fourteenth I escape. Like he's got, he's it here, he's like, he's keeping his mouth shut over there, he's like, not doing it.
Okay, guys, hang on. Well, wait a minute, what, okay, so December twelfth at nine AM.
Yes.
December twelfth is the adop, is the budget adoption.
Yes.
Okay, but we have the actual assessed valuation, uh, final changes in the assessed valuations. That, that doesn't need to be in a meeting or anything?
That's the assessor I need.
For all of it, Chrissy.
Yes. Yeah, I'm just, that's why I'm trying to clarify which ones are meetings, which ones are work sessions, so I can get everything scheduled appropriately.
And then December twenty-second, that's a mandatory one. That's our deadline to levy. But that can be a call-in typically.
Good.
It is, it always is, but it's a quick, hopefully it'll be a quick phone call.
And we're not doing the commissioner meeting on the twenty-third, or are we, December?
No, we've never in the past.
No, you actually don't.
Usually, yeah, usually the second meetings in November and December, we don't end up having because of budget and travel concerns. Um, but now that would, so basically you'd be looking at, the day, the Tuesday before the Thanksgiving holiday. Um, if you wanted to do that, cancel the November twenty-fifth. You'll probably end up with some special meetings. In this time period, um, you know, so I don't know, I don't think that you're not gonna be around. It's just whether you keep that, the, usually it seems like in past years, I don't know of any time we've ever had, the Rangelley meeting as the regular scheduled meeting in November or December. It's always been special meetings that get thrown in. Well, and you get snow and all that, so that's kind of when that too, that ends up happening, but whatever you guys wanna do.
We'll Google me.
We've got, I just won't be here from the fourteenth to the twenty-seventh.
Okay, so we're set now.
We are, I believe we are set, between Chrissy and I, we'll, we'll have her nailed down and send out to you guys.
Well, then I will entertain a motion. We haven't even made.
Oh, we haven't done that. Oh, we haven't done H yet. That's for Mr. Doug.
So we're just gonna, Madam Chair and I move to approve the budget calendar for twenty-twenty-six.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second, we just had a long conversation about all these dates, and hopefully have Ms. Vicki set now. Will you please call the roll?
Overton?
Aye.
O'Hara?
Aye. Motion passes, moving on to line item I.
Can I ask a question before I do it? Before I motion it?
You wanna discuss it first? Discuss it.
So what are we, um, and it probably says it in here, I just don't have it in front of me. So we're extending it to, till when?
Up till September first.
The, the audit is going to September first, I guess we're already in July, okay.
By July thirtieth, it has to be filed with the state of Colorado. Um, there were, there were, um, Paul Miller is, is who our auditor is, and he came back and said there were some things that they, he needed us to correct. There were some additional items and questions that he had, and he just would not have been able to get it complete, um, by the, seventh, July thirtieth date. So that gives us, we did the same thing last year. Mm-hmm, so it gives us a little more time to get all our ducks in a row and make sure they're right.
Yeah, to send that into the state.
That has to be filed with both, yeah, both the audit and the extension have to be filed with the state.
Alright, so, I'm sorry, August first. So Madam Chair, I would move to, uh, approve, the audit extension to September first of twenty-twenty-five.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Anything else from either one of you? Please call the roll.
Overton?
Aye.
O'Hara?
Aye.
Squitchfield?
Aye.
Motion passes, we have no resolutions, no public hearings, so we will move on to other business, and listen to the county administrator update.
Real easy, we did the fair, I am so pleased. As Luce was there, representing the electeds, um, all three commissioners were there. Um, we had, um, several folks from Roden Bridge here, so, uh, Joe and Chris from this Rangelly shop were up there, there could be other people up, uh, Chrissy, brought her sister Cassie and their two girls, and they were the, cooking the, the big ol' hot dogs. Quarter pound hot dogs. Plus, they were big uns, they were big uns. Um, so I think it went really well, um, lot of, participation from the fair board families, everything like that. There's certainly areas where we can improve. But I think it went well as an initial type thing. We will be struggling, and I need volunteers, going forward, because, um, our 4H staff is gonna be limited during that time due to some reasons, so, it's gonna be important if someone can volunteer, that they do so. I would love to have, you know, community volunteers as well. Um, but I think it'll, it'll be just fine, we'll, we'll get through it. Um, the other thing is I'm just spending a lot of time on budget, and we'll be spending a lot more time on budget. So, from here on out.
And I have been in contact with Aaron, with CSU, and he is looking for somebody to help us out, if at all possible. So I'm hoping when we have our executive session with him tomorrow, that he might be able to update us on, where they're at with that, and CSU providing somebody to us. I also got a text from a constituent, thanking all of us at the county for providing those hot dogs, the lunch. And they really appreciated that, and that we were there and, and helping where we could. They've not, said they've not really had that before, so they appreciated that, and they just wanted me to let everybody know.
Well, and I hope we can generate some more, um, employees to come out. So the kickoff was great, because, I mean, uh, yeah, I mean, you were lifting those and toting those, Callie was lifting and toting, Jen, I don't know if you lifted any of the grapes and toted, but, you know, we were doing all the other stuff, um, so, you know, it really, but almost everybody, that came, it seemed like, there was a lot of people that brought someone else with them. So, and it, we really did seem like there was a pretty big turnout. Um, so, you know, I think there's definitely ways we can approve, but, from my understanding, that was probably the most counting employees that had showed up, had shown up at one time. So we've got opportunities throughout the next two weeks for folks to be, involved and, and, you know, Chrissy does the indoor setup. Oh, I forgot, she was there, Lynn was there. She came, she was helping, she was taking pictures, yes, she was. So, anyhow. That's me.
Thank you.
Uh, next we have county commissioner updates.
I'll let Doug go, cause I'm busy still, getting mine written down.
Okay, I met with, uh, some staff and Vicki, um, with your monthly or our weekly meeting. I went to the, uh, yellow, uh, Yampa, white, green, uh, field trip, that went up to Lake Avery and, and, uh, listened to the, uh, presentation by Yellow Jacket about what they, uh, proposed to do in adding some water to, Lake Avery proposals at this time. I'll get into that a little more in a bit. Uh, then, that afternoon, I went to the yellow, white, green roundtable meeting, and talked about the rest of the, the, uh, field trip. Next morning, I went to RDA in Rangelley, spent most of the day around Rangelley, talking to different people. Then I went to, uh, uh, or I did a, a produced water consortium in meeting, the next day, and it appears that, that, uh, the consortium is going to, uh, recommend to the ECNC to, uh, back off of some of the, um, DI community stuff there, or, or figure out a, um, a more equitable way to do that, because it, it, right now, it's not, it's not workable. Um, then I went, uh, I attended a Unified Wolf meeting. Uh, I went to, uh, I talked to Dawn about the Yellow Jacket MOU that day. Uh, AGNC meeting the next day. And the AGNC meeting, I wanna talk a little bit about that, that. Um, counties are going to send a, an unfunded mandate to the state. And I got that letter from, the, uh, AGNC from Mesa County, and I sent it out to you guys. I, and, uh, Lynn kinda, fixed it up a little bit, but I, I got a, uh, notice from AGNC this morning where they're, they're saying that, all of the counties should send individual letters.
Or instead of doing it.
Instead of doing it. And, and what that letter basically says is that, that, uh, they are, we are tired of this state's unfunded mandates, and we are not gonna do them anymore. And I want to, uh, it's, it's too late now, but I, I would like for you to, for Lynn to send that letter out, and have you guys review it, because I would like to do that and ratify it at the next meeting. I think that needs to be done.
Yeah, the sooner the better, I'm sure.
Because, uh, Garfield did theirs yesterday, and, uh, Mesa's is gone, and there's gonna be a lot of other counties that are gonna jump on.
Yeah, I think, I'll put that real quick and get it out there.
I'm sorry. So in talking about that, that unfunded mandate, mandate letter, was that not the one that we were kinda concerned that they might, basically puts the ball in their court of suit?
And we, I've talked to, uh, Mesa County, AGNC, and they, they, uh, understand that, and they're, okay.
Okay.
We're, we're, we're safe.
Okay.
And we listed just like four or five things, right? It's not all of them. But are we saying we're not gonna do any of them, or just those four or five we're focused on?
Four listed are the, the main ones to get their attention. And it, and it says in there that, that, uh, the state of Colorado and the counties, need some legal clarification once in a while, and that's what we're after. So, that's all I'm gonna say about that for the moment. And I talked to Casey Burke about the bridge on Pantrick. Uh, to see if they, for the, uh, engineering people, to see if there was any, high-water stuff that he remembered from his parents or wayback. And, uh, I think Anita and, and Tina reported that at that meeting. I was trying to listen to that meeting, but I got disconnected. Um, then I went to another, uh, Unified Wolf meeting in Fruta. Um, where it was an in-person one, it's the first in-person one where we got to see people's faces and different things. There were some state representatives that were there, or state.
Senator and a house, and a, um, house member.
And some candidates.
Um, the house member was a JBC member as well, and then two candidates for governor.
Yeah, so we got a lot of politic in, in that meeting. Then, uh, I went and helped with the fair setup on Sunday. Did some clear budget training yesterday, and Scott and, or, um, Dawn and I met with Scott and Kelly yesterday, to hammer out more of that MOU for Yellow Jacket. And, uh, we'll kinda put some stuff together and send it to you guys to review.
Are we gonna meet with them before we do final, or do a, actually draft an MOU to send to them?
That's kinda what we did yesterday. So that we, because if you can imagine getting all of those people in a room and trying to do that.
They wanted that in a statement.
So what we did yesterday was kinda do that, and then, uh, as soon as that goes through you people, then we will, schedule a meeting with them to go over it. So it's gonna happen in that meeting, but we wanna have stuff, um.
Do we have a timeline for that, or we don't?
We don't yet, because Dawn's going on vacation. As soon as she gets back, he's got it on his schedule to get it done right away. I want her to do it in Greece or wherever he's going, but.
You didn't buy it?
Well, yeah, but we couldn't get flights.
Um, is there a budget allocation along with that? I mean, is, are we looking at funding, the full engineering?
We need to talk about that on, when we get this MOU, we will talk about that, because there will be, it will be, some budget there.
Cause that'll be your CIP, your, basically your, um, CCITF.
Yes. It will be, but it's a matter of how we, how much of it, and how we wanna use it, and how yellow, uh, Yampa, white, green gets into it, and the Colorado River. There's, there's a lot of things there, and, and, uh, different ideas, but we go over that when we get this stuff figured out. That's me.
That's you.
Thank you.
Wanna go, or you wanna? Um, I attended a, um, BSO meeting, just to kinda hear, I, we don't get that involved with the veterans, so it's Veteran Services Officer. Um, I received an invitation from a state person on it, and so I thought, I'll jump on there and see what this is about, and it was, it's interesting. I mean, they were talking about how to make sure that claims get done, and how the moving pieces and parts, and, and it was more of a collaboration between the VSOs across the state, in making sure claims get processed correctly, and in a timely manner for, or advocating for them to make sure they go through. So, I thought that that was interesting, we just don't get very many emails from the veterans, so.
Started getting them.
Yeah, more recently. Um, attended the NACO Annual Conference, um, the big, conversation there was the HR one, the, what they're calling the BBB, um, uh, the big beautiful bill, a lot of whining going on, um, say it, I don't know how else to say it, like, the sky is not falling, but they want it to be falling. And, and it was interesting, because I had set up a meeting with CCI, um, our, legis, uh, legislative liaison, and, uh, myself being the chair and the vice chair, Steering Committee for Health and Human Services, and Kevin, who's our legislative liaison, said, you know, I, I've been attending all these meetings, and everybody's just wanting to complain and whine. And.
I missed it. Never mind.
On the fly.
You need a fly?
No, I missed it, I totally missed it.
So he was talking about the whining too, and he said, we have got to just buck up, and come up with solutions, and, and it was interesting, because that was the same exact conversation I had with the commissioner, sitting in a SNAP, and Medicaid meeting, and I said, you guys can say this all day long, that all the children are gonna starve, it's not going to happen, one. We are not gonna allow that to happen, but two, what are our solutions? We need to come up with solutions. So, with that being said, um, you know, a couple of my meetings over the last, since July fourth, um, with SNAP and Medicaid, is we are starting to have that conversation, we being the state, as well as, um, directors and commissioners, of what do we need to look at legislatively, what I've been kinda touting for the last three or four months of, where do we need to change policy and legislation? And so they're finally coming to the table and having that conversation. Yesterday, I spent time on a two-hour meeting, voting on what, what we are going to be looking at with CDHS as well. Yesterday I spent time on a two hour meeting voting on what, what we are going to be looking at with CDHS as well as, um, the com- the commissioners legislatively, so on and so forth. So I feel like we're moving in the right direction, having those, our conversations with the state of, we are in a state of turmoil and it's only going to get worse starting in 2027 when all of these, um, you know, policies go into place, the big bill, the beautiful bill goes into place on top of my question to them when they said, well, this is what we're going to do this year. And I said, you have 10 years of this. What are you going to do for the next 10 years? Stop thinking about just what's in front of your nose. We have got to maintain this for the next 10 years. So.
So people know.
Yes. Um, I attended my Northwest TPR meeting as well as MMOF, which, um, MMOF is additional funding that CDOC gives the TPRs that we can allocate out grants for projects, um, in our local TPR area. I attended a behavioral health meeting, um, as well as my Child Abuse Prevention Trust Fund meeting. Um, I did attend the AGNC really quickly. Uh, I did, I wasn't on there very long. I was more wanting to get on there when Heather Jones was presenting, um, wondering what she had to say about, um, Older Americans Act because while I was at the NACO conference, they brought up that, uh, Older American Acts has not been appropriated. And not only has not been appropriated at this point, but they are moving them to two different divisions, which they think is going to split that pot. And so what does that funding look if they do appropriate it? And that's our White River Roundup. That's our senior nutrition program for us. So a lot of moving parts and pieces with Olders American Acts, um, with that. Uh, attended the, a couple of CHSDA meetings, which is our, um, Human Services Director. Um, there are advocacy across the state. Um, I attended the, um, Ike Bailey, uh, Special Work Session. Uh, the, I had a meeting with the VILSEC, the LM Director, um, about the MOU oil and gas. Um, he is still working on that with Julie Murphy on, um, you know, what does this, this MOU look like? What I walked away with is they still are not going to amend, from what I walked away with, not going to amend this MOU, which I'm still not satisfied with. Um, he got an airful on so many different levels. Um, and so he, he is aware and he is having those conversations, he says, with Julie Murphy. So, um, more to come hopefully on that. Set up a meeting with him for tomorrow at three o'clock about, um, Sage grouse mitigation funds, um, ideas that he has. He didn't get into it with me. He just, I brought, I had to bring it up. And, uh, and she said, yes, I would like to. I said, I hear you're going to Moffett County. We would like to have you here. So.
Good.
Very good. Um, attended, like I said earlier, CCI Health and Human Services, um, updates. Um, attended a public health radio interview, both, um, Doug and I and Lynn did for severance tax. Um, I don't know if anything's been published, not that I'm aware of, but Doug and I did do that interview on severance tax and the governor sweeping our money from us.
Well, they, well, they underfill, let us know.
I don't know. Do you know, Lynn? You haven't seen anything last. Okay. Thank you. Um, I've had meetings with Vicky, staff, constituents, and I attended the shooting competition. It was my first time attending the shooting competition. And it was really neat to watch those kids. We've got, we have some really sharp shooters and not, no pun intended, but wow, I was way impressed with, with those kids. So, um, that and, oh, and fair setup as well. So that's my wrap up.
All right. Um, so let's see, in no particular order. Um, attended the Northwest CDC, so Northwest Colorado Development Council meeting. Again, those are every two weeks. Um, continue to work with AGNC, um, Moffett County and hopefully Carrie Brennan on the Outdoor, um, Regional Partnership Initiative. And so along that line, I've also met with, uh, US Forser Curtis and uh, Bill with Forest Service and BLM, just a quick update, letting them know what we are, how that's going to potentially look as we go down the road. And both of them are very excited to be a part of it and very excited that we had pulled it back to the county because they both had partic- uh, somebody within the agencies had participated in it in the very early stages and got frustrated with it. And but going for the most part. So good meetings with both them, not, those weren't the only topics, but, um, both of them had really good meetings. And they actually asked about the natural resource or the agency meetings that we used to have if we were going to be going back to that because we haven't done that for a while. Remember there used to be agency meetings like quarterly that the county did. They both said they really enjoyed those and would certainly welcome those to happen again. So I just thought I would bring that back up. And if, I mean, otherwise, I mean, in addition to that or whatever, I'll still try to be sure I go meet with them every month or two, just to kind of the one-on-one conversations.
We got various feedback on those. Um, some people thought that they were very useful because I know there were times, especially I remember a specific time where Dave Moreland was there and he, and, and Curtis each and him, he said, we're having, I think Curtis said, we're having a problem with this. And Dave said, well, you know what we could do. So you get that.
That's what they were missing.
Some of them could be kind of lengthy and, and long, but certainly if you want to do one, just let us know if Chrissy can get them all.
Yeah, I think maybe, maybe it's how you set it up or lay it out there or something. I don't know. Cause I know what you mean. You can be all afternoon, just talk. But yeah, an agenda, maybe ask each one if they've got a specific agenda item that we could talk about that they either may need help with or that they, you know, what's happening out there? So maybe have agenda items. I don't know. Let's think about it. But I think there's certainly an opportunity there. We might be missing for exactly that same thing. And, and that's what they indicated. We, we always really appreciate getting to know what everybody else is doing.
Yeah. And I would like that, just to be around them for a while.
Mm-hmm.
Input.
Yeah. So maybe we think about that and have each one of them do agenda items. I think that might be a good idea. Okay.
Cause I, I would have to say, I, I heard the opposite of why, why did you guys have me come do that? They were
From who?
Oh, I'm not going to name who, but.
But not BLM and Forest Service?
No.
Okay. No. So I think, you know, one other thing, I don't know, maybe it's county people that are not caring to, you know, each department of the county, but I think agency wise, there's value in bringing that to you.
County departments typically did not go. It would have just been just Eddie, just natural resources typically.
So.
Most of the other counties.
So anyways, yeah, they were really frustrated. Or I shouldn't say frustrated. They just certainly welcomed the opportunity to do it again. So. Um, let's see, I have down CPW. Oh, met with, um, some of the CPW staff talking wolves and so forth. Make sure I was on the same page as some others. Um, and then met with and heard from several constituents and just wanted to give Roden Bridge kudos again, because I heard back very positive things about the improvements to the road that I had heard. I think it was County Road 22. I'm not sure. Can't remember the number of it. But anyway, got a text saying thank you, looking good. They're working their tails off. So let them know that. Um, then it seems like I spent last week, all week on wolves. So attended the CPW Commission Meeting, um, to hear the conversation about the um, payments for the compensation on the depredation. Long story short, they did pay those after a very long conversation. Um, I am very frustrated with the state's uh, effort to not pay those. I will tell you, it sounded so much like nothing more than advocates way that they file suit to try to have to, to not have to do or let somebody do what they want to. Literally they were hung up on the words, um, missing or missing and dead. The, the cattleman turned in their required, their forms with missing and dead and the statute only says missing. So those are two different things they shouldn't have to pay. Or we've already paid you so much, it's not fair that we pay you more. Those are advocate types of arguments. That's not state government dealing with the law that says they have to pay. I was really frustrated, just to say the least. But the other thing I would say, I did get the chance to, so at the evening meeting we went to and had dinner. Um, Ty Jacober was there, one of the CPW Commission members. I really enjoyed getting to, he sat down across the table from me and I really kind of got to know him a lot better. And I think there was a lot of value in that. And then the other one is the new lady that was appointed that is the, um, guiding outfitters representative. I had heard a lot of frustrations about, she's not really, I mean, that could be a, you know, she's really not a guiding outfitter. And I can't tell you about that, but I can tell you she seems to be a pretty reasonable person. And, and concerned about the people that are involved in this, not just the wolves. And she, like I say, she seemed to be a really reasonable person. And by the way, she comes to Travers Lake and goes fly fishing every year. So I gave her my card and said, hold her when she comes by. So, um, was pretty excited about that. Um, her, so we, I think we've still got Ty, um, Murphy Robinson, um, the past chair, May, and then assuming that she might be pretty reasonable. We've still got four on there. Of course, that's not huge out of 11, but it's better than where we thought we were. So so much for that one. Um, spent yesterday ag water, um, just, just as an FYI, the, definitely the concerns with the dry year and where we're going. Um, so not just agriculture, but in general, there are starting to be more and more conversations about there could be a compact call much sooner than we had anticipated. Um, fair setup. I was really pleased with it. Um, I was really, I mean, we were done by noon. And that, that was pretty amazing to me. When you look out in that barn, how many panels were set up? That was huge to have that done. Most kids were in helping every which way they could. We finally in the end was successful in getting people divvied up different groups instead of just all being on top of each other. Um, I think there's some ways to improve, but I thought it went really well to start for the first year. So very pleased with it. Um, the other thing, um, Vicky went, we went and looked because as I said, some of the things I heard when I was campaigning was the desire for, um, handicap access to the grandstands. And so we went and looked at some potential ideas there. So maybe down the road we can do that. So I'm pretty excited about that. Um, Doug, when you mentioned the fact that, um, let's see, something about, anyway, something triggered this for me. I can't remember just exactly what, but, um,
Can we go through my list?
Yeah. Would you do that? And then I'll pick up on that. Um, so the fire there, so, um, I'm very familiar with the fire that's happening over near Gateway because it is my sister's allotment that is being burnt at this point. Um, but I will tell you, one of the things that I heard from them, well, a couple of things, loud and clear, the agency is being amazing to work with. So that is really good to hear. And I believe if we had a fire here, we would have the same kind of coordination with, um, Curtis. The other thing that I heard is the firefighting business that goes along with it and the amount of money and waste that goes into all of that is still there. Um, which is, I mean, that's one of the things that everybody used. Like, maybe it was what you had said. Um, as far as whining about the things instead of buck up and let's, let's deal with it. Everybody used the fires as a thing to say, you know, we're going to all just burn up and die because of the cuts. And so whether it was for that reason or whatever, the administration said, we will make sure there are firefighters. But holy cow, there needs to be some revamping, it sounds like. I mean, I didn't get to see it. My hands, uh, hands on. There's some really good people there, but the amount of money unbelievable spend there. So yes, we need to buck up and take care of business on our own. And that's all I got.
Anything else for the good of the order? Alrighty, we are journeying at 1:39. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. You did it. So much for a short meeting. I looked at that agenda like, well.